We'll call this gathering to order. First is the regular meeting of the Seminole Airport Authority. Roll call, Jay.
Jeff Griffin.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, we move on to approvals and acceptances. Bids, number one. Consideration and possible action to approve declaring the decommissioned AWAS system of Seminole Regional Airport a surplus and allowing city staff to solicit bids.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Seminole Gas Authority is now called to order. Roll call.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, we call into regular session the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, please. Please come around, state your name and what it is you want to present.
My name is Nancy Lad, and I live at 1301 Harbor Street. And I have some pictures. There's two pages there. Every time we have a heavy rain, my whole backyard floods from the sewer. And there's pictures on the front page is where the water's all coming out. It's all sewer going down. And then on the second page are pictures of the line that they come out and they put on it. And this has been going on for about eight years. Excuse me. About eight years. And I would like to see if something could be done to correct that.
Yes, ma'am. Let's give him just one second to get the pictures and then I'll... Here's his set of pictures right here. Would you take those over to the city manager, please? Thank you.
I can pass them over to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. As you're aware, through the years, I don't remember the exact count, but we were in the hundreds of what Department of Environmental Quality calls bypasses up to a few years ago. We're down in the neighborhood of 10 that we consider problem areas. We are aware of this. We hope that the point repair that we've just done, I think we did a little over 400 feet down on around Coolidge Street. This line in particular flows in and utilizes the line that runs down Reed Street, through Reed Circle, across the creek, and behind Northwood School, down into the bottom. So we've just completed, I mean, within the last few days, a significant upgrade to a main gathering area for that. We hope that that alleviates our problem. If it does not, we're going to be on top of it. We're aware of it. And our mission, as you guys know, and hopefully you'll see fit to appropriate a little the money that we've talked about in work sessions to continue the point repairs with the track code team and continue to eliminate these bypasses. We're passionate about it. We want to be 100%, which very, very few communities are. But our goal is to eliminate all or as many as possible of these type of bypasses. We don't offer excuses. We just say we're going to fix it. And we're going to do what we can, and I understand that you're, I really do, and I'm sympathetic.
It's washing away my patio back there. Not to mention it's sewer on my yard.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a patio I can't use because it stinks. The neighbors have a pool they can't hardly use because it stinks because it's right there by there. I contacted the Department of Environmental Quality today.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to be up Friday.
Okay.
To look at it. And because I didn't know where else to turn.
Oh, that's...
I mean, this has been ongoing for several years. As Mike knows, his crew comes out and puts stuff on it. Every time it rains, they come down our street and look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And then they come back when it quits raining and puts that line out there. Then I can't mow it because I'm breathing that in, you know? It's just been an ongoing thing. And I do hope that you are able to correct it.
We're going to do everything we can.
Thank you.
Everything possible.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Any other appearances? Current business. Item number one. Consideration and possible action to approve final pass-through invoices totaling $110,374.60 for construction work on the sewer and water lines on US 270 East Broadway, with all invoices to be paid by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation without cost to or reimbursement from the City of Seminole.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second. Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. That brings us to the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. Call to order. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the City of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen. Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We move into elections and appointments. Consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral reappointment of Deanna Hamilton to the Lake Development Commission for an additional three-year term.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Sherri Carter to the park board for a three-year term.
Is that okay, Brett?
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? Yes, sir, please come around, state your name and issue.
Good evening. My name's Brent White. I am, I'm a co-owner of a business here in town, a local business roofing company. And what I'd like to address tonight or put into your heads, my wife wrote this out, but I can't read this and talk at the same time. I'm not that talented. What I'd like to talk to you about is, in the City of Seminole, to do roofing, you're supposed to have a city license and permits. In the last three weeks, I've caught three different contractors in town doing business without a permit or license. When I seen this, I notified the police department. They went down, shut them down, told them to cease all work until they got the permits and the licensing required. And in other cities, if you get caught operating contracting without a license, it's a pretty significant fine. I would like to y'all to consider looking at that as $500 or greater for contracting without a license in the City of Seminole. Because as it stands right now, if they get caught, they get shut down, it's a $25 fee to get your city license, plus the permit. The permit is a percentage of the total cost of the job. With that being said, somebody could tell them that, you know, if it was a $10,000 roof, I'm putting it off for $4,000. He's a buddy of mine. Well, the city loses revenue. So one of the solutions that I come up with is make it a flat fee. Say $50 apiece per roof. If they got to put decking on, make it another $25, because that's two trips for an inspector. This recoup some of the revenue that we're spending in manpower to patrol this and to set these standards forth. Terry done an awesome job. He does an awesome job, but he's one man for this whole city. There's a lot of requirements. I know with other utilities, he's got to go out there and inspect businesses when they get put in. They're hollering for him. Hey, I need this. My guy's supposed to be here today. I've got to get water turned on, got to get electric turned on, all this. So he's jumping through hoops all day long. One of the solutions that I kind of come up with is with the cooperation of the police department, if his officers would see a roof going on or a violation going on, just run a check. Hey, call City Hall. They got permits. If they don't have permits, get out and proceed further. Okay? Do you have a license? Nope. No city license, okay? Here's a certificate or a citation for this amount, and you stop all work until you meet the requirements for the city. You know, the way I kind of look at it is the more eyes we have out there patrolling this, the more we can enforce it. So if we split this, you know, between the code enforcement officer and the PD, then we have that many more people looking. Or even go to the public works. They could call it in. Any city official or employee. If they recognize this, see what they can do. But I think it's a revenue opportunity for the City of Seminole to start imposing some of these fines, to hold people accountable to do what they need to do. Because in the state, or for me to have a city license, I have to meet, I got to have a registered business with Secretary of State. I've got to take all that. I've got to have workman's comp and liability insurance and go to the CIB Board, Construction Industries Board in the State of Oklahoma. And then bring that down here and show the City of Seminole that I am in compliance with the state to get that $25 license. So I think we need to hold everybody to that standard because, you know, it's cutting your local people out of business, or I mean, out of bids. I don't mind losing a bid if I'm bidding apples and apples. But when a guy doesn't have the same credentials and the same overhead as I do, and he can come in there and undercut me half. Last year, I paid over $8,000 in liability insurance alone. So if a guy don't have that overhead, you know, it's a lot easier for him to compete and undercut everybody. Plus, a lot of these people coming from out of town are buying their shingles in Oklahoma City or their material in Oklahoma City and then having them shipped down here because it's $65 delivery fee from Oklahoma City. Last year, with our local lumber company, I hate to say this, but I'm going to, I spent over $100,000 in the City of Seminole last year with our local lumber company. So, you know, give the local guys a better opportunity to compete than to let these people just come in here and do whatever they want and think they can walk all over the City of Seminole and that we're not going to catch them, we're not going to do anything to them, and owe them accountable. Thank you.
Most of these folks from out of town that you've observed?
Yes. Yes, one of them that, well, I'll just tell you, I called Brandon Bowen. Brandon went over there real nice about it. Asked them if they had a permit. They said no. Asked them if they had a license. No. He asked them who was doing the job, who were they working for. They gave him some bogus name, didn't know how to get ahold of him, anything like that. So Presbyterian church there on Russell Street. The ropes are still on it, the tow boards are still on it, and they hadn't been back. And that was last week. So, you know, they'll probably sneak in. They'll finish it up one evening or one weekend, and we'll never see them again. I don't know if there's anything that the city can do about it. I don't know if you can hold the homeowners or the business owners or property owners liable if we catch them after the fact.
So...
Because if you get reputable people in here that's willing to play by the rules, you're protecting your citizens of the City of Seminole. We're not going to end up on News Channel 4 with some old boy that come in here and just took advantage of everybody and skipped town. Now everybody's got leaks or problems and they can't get ahold of.
So the homeowner takes part in this, then, or the property owner?
I would think so. And I mean, I would be willing to sit down, and I've talked to another contractor here in town. He feels the same way I did. I would be willing to sit down with our city leaders in the council if they want and discuss options that we could do and the way that other towns do it, other municipalities do it, and requirements to, you know, try to make it to where they just don't think they can walk in here and do whatever they want and they want without having to answer for it.
Well, if someone came by my home not long ago and wanted to look at the roof, I said, "Go ahead." And of course, there was some hail damage. But I didn't know to ask them if they have a license to operate here, but I will now.
I mean, you get people coming from Texas. I think there is, I want to say they told me, and they'll hold me to this, like 30,000 licensed contractors in the State of Oklahoma for roofing. And you get a lot of them coming up from Texas on a storm, Kansas, all over. And they come up, they want you to sign a piece of paper. Hey, if I can total your roof, I'll be, you know, I'll take what the insurance pays and all this. They throw a line out there that's not entirely true because they don't take into consideration you're deductible and all this. So a lot of them, some of them will take money upfront, never show back up. You've seen that scenario on TV. There's a lot of tricks to the trade. And then when, if they do do the roof and they come back and they say, hey, I got a leak or I got problems, oh, I'll get somebody down there. I don't know which tall falls, Texas. I've had guys call me and ask me if I'd go fix a roof from when they done here in town. So I'd go do it. Wouldn't even charge the homeowner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I may point out, I've talked to Brent and we talked about this at length. Definitely, he's approaching this the right way as far as a concern because one of the things that we talked about was making sure that the playing field is level for everybody, especially our local guys. I didn't mention this to him because I just had a chance to look at it. We do actually have a provision in our city ordinances that make this a misdemeanor. And as we know, we have the maximum amount that we can actually find up to $750 on a first offense for this. So I haven't really seen any, as far as, from a city's attorney standpoint, I haven't seen any citations really in a while. I think I mean, I think there was a couple of citations maybe for failure to obtain a permit in the past, but they're very few and far between. So I know Terry does a good job of policing it and doing what he can do. But we have it, and I guarantee you, if it comes to me and it's there, we will pursue it. I will pursue it. It sometimes, and then there's always extenuating circumstances we talked about. You know, sometimes if you, if there's a repair that needs to be made on a weekend, you know, the city offices are closed, that permit needs to be pulled first thing, you know, Monday morning when the business office opens. And if it's not done, then, you know, that's something that that person's going to be subject to liability for. So, I mean, it's, there's going to be things like that that's going to happen, but there's, you know, no excuse for not having a license. That's a different animal. So, anyway, I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, I have a question. From what you just said to what Mr. White said as far as, let's talk about the Presbyterian church. Okay, what will happen from that? I mean, they've been shut down, right?
They've been shut down, but more than likely, before it rains, somebody will come in there on an evening or a weekend. They'll complete it because there's not a whole lot left to do on it.
Have they been fined? Has it, have they been cited?
No, they haven't been fined.
Is that, is that the void that we're talking about? You just got to leave? Wash your hands and go? Is that the void that we're talking about to the council?
Yeah, that's part of the void that I like to see taken care of. I mean, you can only do so much because granted, they are hired hands. They're not the ones that are flipping the deal for it or not the ones that are hourly.
Somebody's paying them.
Somebody's paying them. You got to find that person that's paying them. And you got to find that person that made the agreement with your homeowner. Am I right?
Well, sure.
Well, that's something we have to look at the ordinance because I would almost think that we could cite everybody that was there. I mean, me and Brent will have to get together and talk about this, but I think we can cite everybody on the job because if we don't, they're never going to tell us who the contractor is.
What's the liability for the property owner?
Well, because any person found violating any provision of the ordinance is liable. And, but it says that residential contractors are the ones that are supposed to be licensed and supposed to have the permits, you know, because it, now, you know, it's a good question. You know, as homeowners, we don't, if we're doing repairs on our own house, there's exceptions to this. If you're a homeowner doing your own repairs, you don't have to go pull a permit. Don't have to be licensed. And, you know, we talked about that there's going to be, that happens a lot, you know, and it's kind of hard to police that just to make sure that, you know, people are not, you know, hiring people to just to come in and do it under that, you know, with that subterfuge, you know? But we need to, we can look at it. I think it just, we just need to start paying more attention to it and kind of having everybody help police it. I mean, obviously Brent and his crews are doing it. Terry's been doing it. PD obviously is involved. So we just probably need to redirect our efforts and come up with a plan to stop it.
Well, if a roof's small enough, it can be done over a weekend.
I'm sorry?
If a roof is small enough, it can be done over a weekend.
Very much so. Very much so. I mean...
So if the property owner has no liability...
Yeah, I mean, again, if you're looking at it from that context, I mean, your electricians, your plumbers, you've got a water leak at, you know, midnight on Saturday night. There's no way you're going to be able to, so we're going to have to have some, be reasonable about it, you know? So I'm not really sure we can hold somebody accountable criminally for, you know, doing, you know, stopping damage to property. I know I would feel very uncomfortable filing something like that. So we, there's a way. We just need to be reasonable about it and approach it, and Brent's brought it to our attention. And it's, I think we're all on board from what I gather talking about.
Thing to remember, I think, is not just with your first, but there's a lot of these others. If they're not from Seminole, tell them to get off your property. I do that. Say, "Some foreigner coming on my land? Get off! They're not from here. I'm not going to use them."
Brent, thank you for bringing that up. I really wasn't aware of that, so thank you. And I promise you, we will look into it and continue
Yeah.
with what you're talking about. Because the volumes that I heard from you is the shingles are brought here in Seminole, the taxes are paid in Seminole, and that's what keeps this place running.
That's right.
So I think that's our responsibility to look in what you're saying and go from there.
I think if you can ascertain who is in charge on that job, that's who you give the ticket to.
If you can ascertain that.
And if not, give it to all of them. Because if they can't, if the workers know they're going to get a ticket for working without their bosses, they're not going to come back.
Or they're going to give us a statement of who the boss is.
Yeah. So, either I give the ticket to you...
Yeah, but the workers will not do it and say, "Where's our, where's the permit? We gotta have a permit or they're going to fine us too."
Yeah.
It all works together.
They'll put working for these guys if...
Any person found violating it can be held accountable.
Yeah.
That's the law.
That's the, that's the law.
Okay. Case closed.
Okay.
By the way, he was nervous about speaking tonight. I thought he did a pretty good job.
He's never nervous. I know the guy.
You notice I didn't send Brian?
He probably would have paid to get up.
I just said that on television, Brent, and I just want you to know that.
Okay.
Okay. That brings us then to, yes. I didn't see your hand up, Dolores. I'm sorry.
We don't know you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I think I recognized you. Closer examination.
I'm a stranger in town. And I've been asking and commenting and asking about the railroad track and the trees. We're in the jungles now. And I've been waiting and waiting and waiting, and the trees keep growing and growing and growing. And nobody says anything about it. And now, the property on Dale Street, the old, the Washington School and GM was, it's going to be a jungle pretty soon. Somebody doesn't go down there and cut that. I don't know whether you want to wear it or not, but I'm letting you know. You need to come by there and see. Thank you.
Well, I've got some good news, if you want to hear this.
Okay.
Yes.
We have been to the highest levels with Union Pacific in the past 30 days to 60 days. We have made contact. They have, we have a person that is in charge of the track maintenance, and we're dealing directly with that person out of, I believe it's Houston. And not only we are we in contact with them, we have a contractor that came down and did a small portion of clearing recently down, I think it was toward, somewhere down the end of Main Street, somewhere around Second Street. And they're coming back and they're, we're in the process of right now of getting the track identified as far as UPS, Union Pacific's, what they're responsible for. And I think you're going to see some movement on that very quickly. One of the things they're already actually talking about is not only just clearing it, but how often they're going to come and keep it mowed. And right now, we're in negotiations that they're going to be here at least, you know, they want to be here at least once a month, and they're making that commitment. But, my pushback is, well, once a month, twice a month, three months, whatever, three times a month, whatever it is to keep it in compliance with our ordinance is what you need to do. So, I think you're going to see that happen very quickly. If we finally have gotten movement and traction, and I see that, see that moving our direction pretty quickly.
You know, you might take into consideration, if they don't do it, as they haven't in the past, then obviously they've abandoned the line. We'll take it up, sell the railroad ties and the iron. It's abandoned property.
Believe it or not, that was part of the discussions we had. They were trying to determine if they own the line and if it had been abandoned. So, you're right.
Does that fall under misdemeanor if they don't?
Yeah, we've, yes.
We've had it with the Corporation Commission before.
We've had, we've had some citations issued.
We're going to issue an arrest warrant for Warren Buffett.
Yeah.
(laughing).
We've actually done, done something similar, but...
I've been doing some things with property. I confess that I've been mowing some places. Have a crew that's been doing that. And it takes at least twice a month to keep a property in compliance. So, I mean, it's just an idea to shoot for. I know that for a fact. I mean, we've just, it takes at least twice a month in the summertime. You got about, probably 13 or 14 mowings in a season to, just to keep the grass down.
I think the good, the positive sign on this, this time, and I think Mike can verify, we've actually got the contractor who is probably going to be doing this. But, because of the high growth that we've got in some areas, we're probably looking at getting some, somebody else in here to, that's got some heavier equipment to get, to get it clean. I'm not sure this guy's going to be able to do it on a regular basis until they actually get it cut. I mean, a lot of it's trees. But, they're, they're not wanting to, just, so everybody's clear, they're not wanting to go from the middle of the track and go out, you know, 100 yards on each side of the track. I mean, they're, right now, we're trying to nail down just exactly what they're responsible for. Hopefully, we'll get that, get that ironed out.
Yeah, I've looked at that stuff. And around, there's a church in that vicinity, too. And it's just grown up to the point where we couldn't mow it when we went through what we had. We're just going to mow it. And someone's going to have to go in and cut trees and get it, get it taken care of.
Something that went down a railroad track, it just, those trees just down, it's like, yes, it's going down.
Well, I know that they have, well, they have equipment to do that. But, there's other properties over there that need to be trimmed back, too, that have, have trees, you know, just big around and stuff. You just can't get in there and mow. And you can't get in with a brush augon on some of it.
Any other appearances or petitions from the audience? Yes, Amy.
Amy Britt with the Seminole Chamber. Just want to make everyone aware, community-wide, that the Independence Day celebration that the Chamber does is going to be on Monday, July the 3rd this year. So, fireworks, inflatables, watermelon, all that good stuff. Everything's the same, live entertainment. It'll just be on Monday. So, when you get off work on Monday, come down, celebrate with us, stay out, watch the fireworks. And then on the 4th of July, spend it with your family and get up the next morning and head to work on the 5th. So, come celebrate with us on the 3rd in the park, hopefully, if no rain happens. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Anything else? Way of appearances. If not, we move then to the public hearing. We are opening a public hearing for discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 joint budget for the City of Seminole and related authorities and funds.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to, to tell you that we are exceedingly fortunate to have someone like Jay Cox in our midst. And if I, if you feel like I'm overselling it, I assure you, I'm underselling it. Jay does a fantastic job, as evidenced by all the audits that he's passed with Flying Colors. The fact that you guys support him in, in updating our in-code software makes his job a little bit easier. But, I'm really, really proud that we've got someone like him on staff. And I just, this budget is the result of a lot of, a lot of hours of review and hard work. And I certainly appreciate him. And I appreciate all my staff for, for giving him the information that goes into the budget. So, with that being said, I'm going to, I'm just going to dive in. And if it's okay with you, I'm going to hit the highlights of some of the budget summary. And then I'm going to give you some nuggets that I feel are probably the most important. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some things that we talked about in work sessions that I think are, are relevant to what the public may want to hear in terms of, what are we thinking about doing with some of our money? So, and then after that, if you want to drill down further into individual funds or individual departments, we're absolutely ready to do that. And of course, most importantly, anything that the public might have to say with regard to our budget or recommendations. I just heard one, we need more, more roofing enforcement. That's, you know, that's, that's a position. It could be. So, those are the types of ideas that we want to come out of this, the budget hearing. And we can make adjustments to the budget based upon any kind of public comment that you guys agree with. So, let me start with the general fund. The total revenue on general fund is $10,826,277. We've got total appropriations in the neighborhood of $10,955,432. We had a beginning fund balance of $340,452, which will leave us with an ending fund balance of $211,297. So, we're looking good in the general fund. The general fund CIP, I think you may have something in front of you that calls for a transfer in on the CIP. That would be fund number 12 for $100,000. We've actually adjusted that down to $64,000 in the general fund CIP. And I'll, I'll mention why later. So, we're going to have an ending fund balance in that general fund CIP. Because we had a beginning fund balance of $25,000, we're going to end the fund with $25,000. So, we're going to expect to spend $64,000 in the CIP for general fund. Water and sewer, we've got total revenues coming in projected at $8,158,924. The appropriations are $8,128,821. And the ending fund balance is going to be $607,985. Water, sewer, CIP's $25,000 this year. We've allocated $25,000 basically to, to buy replacement parts for the water and sewer crews. We've got the ending fund balance on that after we allocate $25,000 is going to be $508,531. Wellness Center is a challenge this year. That's fund 98. We're, we're going to be looking at $459,139 income with appropriations of $458,932. That, with the deficiency that we had in the beginning fund, we're going to essentially stay the same. So, the deficiency is going to be $22,676 in the Wellness Center. I think the Wellness Center's holding its own. You'll probably recall several years ago, we had a, well, really from the beginning, we've had a deficiency in that, we've kind of chopped away at that, in that fund. And we're down to $22,000 in the neighborhood of that. So, I'm certainly not alarmed about, by that. The auditor doesn't seem to be particularly alarmed by that. But, it is something that we want to address going forward. You know what? If, I don't think it's necessary at this point that we get into the, the animal control or cemetery. Maybe the, the sales tax revenue is important. Let's talk about that. The estimated revenues are going to be $1,908,600. The total appropriations will be $1,837,897. So, our, our beginning fund balance on that will be, was $22,211,414. Ending fund balance of $22,282,117. So, we've got revenue to operate. I think probably the important thing that I need to point out is that, well, there's several. Our revenues are fairly flat, okay? We had an increase of, and check me on this, Jay, but around 2%, okay? So, that is great news. That's, that's healthy. That's a healthy growth. The sewer and water revenues were, were going to be up around 3%, would you say? So, we've got healthy growth. Here's the problem. This year, we were told by our current carrier that we were going to have a 70% increase in our healthcare coverage. That's incredible. I mean, I just, I don't even know, Jake had to pick me up out of the floor when he told me that, that the carrier had said that. The good news is that Jay worked some wizardry and has made a balanced budget. Our healthcare is going to effectively remain in place with, with some exceptions. There, we're going to actually have better coverage for, for an increase, overall increase of about $200,000, bottom line to our budget, to keep our employees covered in, in the same way that we've done it in the past. Offering some to their families that are not covered with other plans, et cetera, et cetera. We can get much deeper into that. I've brought my spreadsheet here. If you want to get real deep into it, we can talk specifics. But, the bottom line is, for the public's consumption, is that it's going to be about $200,000 increase on healthcare. So, yeah, we can grow in sales tax, grow a little bit in sewer and water. But, if it's being eaten by health coverage, it's very difficult. The, our strategy for many, many years has been to provide healthcare coverage for our employees. We feel strongly that that brings us quality people and that it allows us to retain quality people. And that's, I'm still passionate about that. However, there will be a point when you guys will say, you know what, we're paying more in healthcare coverage than we are wages. I don't know how soon we're going to get there, but at 71% increase per year, we're going to get there pretty darn fast. It's alarming. I wish I had all the solutions, but I don't. It's kind of being dictated to us. But, we're going to, we're going to carry forward. The great news is, we're still going to be able to meet this year's budget. But, we would like to have spent that money on something more progressive than, than the old healthcare premiums. But, the, there are another $75,000 payment. Bryant Baker's not here to divest himself, so I can say whatever I want.
(laughing).
The, the self-contained breathing apparatus that you see our firefighters, where we, we took out, effectively financed at loan, over three years. Our last payment for $75,000 will be coming out of that, that increase that we talked about. We've got, I talked about Reynolds Wellness Center. We'll be giving them a $40,000 advance, effectively supporting the Reynolds Wellness Center out of that. And then lastly, we talked about the CIP had $100,000 initially in at the general fund CIP. We're actually going to take that down to $64,000 because what we would like to do is use $36,000 of that money to augment the contract that we've got on the golf course. The golf course is a bargain at just about any price. It adds a lot to our community. It's pretty much a demand for anybody that is in the corporate world. We need those to be able to create jobs. The alternative would be for the city government to take it back. And Mike told me he's going to walk out the door if I make him do that. And I don't want him to walk out the door. You know, for, for $36,000 in addition to what we're paying already, I feel strongly that if you guys want us to take it back, number one, I'm afraid I would burn up the greens because I can't grow grass in my yard. I don't think I can do very well at a golf course. But, the, the next thing would be that I think I would have to go down to the bank and borrow enough money to pay for tractors, the mowers. You're talking $600,000, $700,000 that I would rather not have to, to deal with in this budget. So, I'm recommending that we take that $36,000 out of the CIP and augment the contract for the golf course and keep the current contractor under, under contract. All right. Let's talk just briefly about some of the things that we talked about in our work sessions. For the public's consumption, I want you to know that these folks have spent hours in work sessions trying to nail down this budget, work through it, let us know exactly what they want to see. It's, thank you. Thank you very much for the hours that you volunteer. Real quickly, I want to run through some, some facts. We, we just got through talking in large part about our operations budget. Those are the, the police officers, the firefighters, the public works guys, the librarians, the cemetery workers, the parks, on and on. And with the public's wisdom, over the years, they have passed several sales tax issues. In those sales tax issues, they earmark money for various projects, not salaries, okay? These are monies that we typically are not going to take any salary money out of and go hire someone. These are hard, hard projects. This year, the city council, well, blew that, had it on my picture. The city council has available to them around $1.7 million, a little over $1.7 million to do projects. Some of the projects that they've talked about are major, major expenditures at the water, or excuse me, at the sewer plant. We've got to do the final clarifier, some, some other works with pumps and, and other things that are way above my pay grade. They, they do a great job down there with a very old plant. And we're going to make some, some adjustments on that and do some upgrades with some of that money. Pipelines, we're, we're, we're recommending to the council that they allocate some of the money to continue the track, we call it the Track Ho Team. If you've ever seen the big Track Ho around town, that's their job. They're, they're there to replace those lines that are giving you trouble. And we're down on Coolidge now. We finished that job. We're going to start working our way back and, and hopefully solve the rest of those bypass problems. So, that's one of the things that we've talked about in work sessions already. You just kind of, you kind of acted as a paid advisor here for me to, for that money to be allocated. So, I appreciate that. So, I appreciate that on one hand. The, the other things that we've talked about, some of the other things are swimming pool. We've got a situation on our hands. I'm not going to say that Sharon caused it, because it's actually 75 years old. But, we've, we've been dealing with this, bless her heart. Sharon, every year, we try to figure out how we're going to keep that, that thing limping through for one more year. And we're to a point now, we're, we're being asked, they, they kind of reviewed with the chlorinator, the blasting the pool again and trying to paint it, the fence being replaced. We're, we're looking at, we, we were asked to spend a little over $100,000 in upgrades to the pool that will last exactly one year, okay? Right now, we are dumping so much chemical in that, the water is leaking out so fast. And remember, that three years ago, we did major renovations to help this. But it's leaking so fast, we can't put, we can't not put the, the chemical in it fast enough. And if you've tried to buy a chemical lately, you know that it's, it's a crazy amount. So, one of the things that the council has been talking about, and I'll let you guys speak for yourself, but is the possibility of building a new swimming pool. Now, more than likely, we're talking about financing the construction of a new swimming pool, rather than using our whole 1.7 million dollars to build one. More than likely, we would want to try to buy smaller chunks and take it through maybe one of the authorities to finance that. So, the, in terms of the design, we don't know. Until they turn me loose to go, go work on it, we haven't even started talking to engineers. We don't know if it's going to be an Olympics pool, or if it's going to be a whitewater designed, you know, small pool with, with slides. We don't know any of that. But the discussion at the council level has taken place in some of the executive sessions. Now, not everyone was in, in one of the, in the work sessions that talked about it. So, this may be news to some of the council members, but I, I don't think so. That, that was a big-ticket item that we talked about. Let's see if there's any others. Oh, adjustments to these, okay? We talked about making upgrades to our council chambers to be able to continue to televise. Probably the largest complaint that we get about these meetings is that when they're televised on Channel 23, we can't hear you. So, hopefully through some of the adjustments, some of the equipment has aged out back here that, it's just, it's just old. It's a little over 10 years old now, and it's becoming very difficult to transmit. And so, we're, we're building in a little bit of money for that. Stop signs. I don't know if you've been through Seminole and seen the conditions of some of the stop signs, especially the stop, stop signs that face south. They're, they're in bad shape, they're bleached out. Mike will tell you, one of my pet peeves is to drive up on a stop sign and have the pole rusted. Just, it just says volumes about our community if, if that is taking place. And so, we're, we're asking for $15,000 out of the bond money to do a, a complete retool of our stop signs. So, let's see. Mike wants a bat wing mower, we've got that in there. Oh, roof on the, we're going to build a, put a new roof on our public works department. That's, that's a big-ticket deal. That's a lot of roof. The good news is that not only- Did I mention it's a big-ticket deal? So, you know, we're, we're looking at replacing the roof above public works. Not only does it keep my public works crews dry and warm, it may also keep a little bit of water out of the police department that sits right below the public works department. And you all probably know that from time to time, we get water in our 911 call center. And the 911 center has gone down at least two times that I'm aware of, because we got wet in there. So, that's, that's a priority. We're going to take care of that. There was some discussion, at least in one of the groups, with, with work sessions, about participating with the college in, in the construction of new soccer and baseball complex out near the college. That, I think that would be a great investment. Now, how much we, we participate in that, I don't know. But that'll be up to the city council, when and if we get a proposal to do so. But anytime we can add new wonderful facilities, like they're talking about, I, I think it's a, it's a goldmine for our community. We bring in a lot of visitors, and I, I hope we can get you some data on what tourism generates for us, but it's significant. It is, it's a big deal. With that, oh, we're going to ask total for all the bond projects that, that we're going to be coming to you with. We're going to ask that you allocate about a million three of the available million seven for expenditure in this, in this next fiscal year. All right, Jay, what did I miss?
I think you covered it.
Okay. I'd be glad to field any questions from the council, and if you, if it pleases you, I'd field any from the public.
We talked about sidewalks. Did you mention that and I missed it?
Sidewalks.
Oh, well, I didn't want, you said you were going to talk about it. I would be glad to, but you're, you're the one that they're going to throw the parade for once they, yeah. Okay, there was, there was some discussion, and I think everyone nodded their head that they thought this was a good idea. We don't, obviously, we don't vote in any of those work sessions. That's not what that's designed to do. That's what this is for. But, the idea was, was brought up that we needed to replace some of the Main Street sidewalks. That some of the sidewalks are actually getting dangerous down on Main Street. There, there was a good support level there, and we'll bring this back to the council with some cost estimates on what it will take, and if there are contractors around that'll do it. But we feel like in this next year, that we'd like to do at least one block, or try to do one block. Let's get a feel for what it's going to cost. Get one block replaced on the sidewalks, and maybe make that kind of an annual thing. Maybe we do the next, next block down and so forth. Now, how we're going to select that block, that's going to be up to these guys that, that may be that they just put numbers in a hat, 200 block, 300 block, you know, et cetera, and pull one out. But, we'll, we'll address that going forward. We're really not to the point that we, we're ready to do selection. But I think it's probably more appropriate that we go get some cost estimates and find out what that's going to cost. But yes, of the 1.3 that we're going to ask that, that be allocated, the sidewalks would be one of the, one of the projects.
They also discussed potholes, Steve, in the streets.
Well, yes. You probably realize that we didn't, of the things that I talked about, that didn't equal 1.3 million dollars. There's a lot of leeway in that. I would like to see at least two streets, maybe three, depending on the length of the streets. I would like to see us do some, some big, real work on some streets. And that's coming out of the 1.3 million dollar allocation. There, there are a couple of roads that need it. The potholes, that's, that's something that's, it's a little bit different animal. We can do that in-house. It's not something that we have to contract for. But, we're going to make some money available out of the, out of the, the bond money to our pothole crews and, and get them more active on potholes.
Is Broadway one of those streets to consider?
Unfortunately, Broadway is a state highway. Well, the vast majority of it now. Once you go through, what are the, what's the corner called?
Crazy Corner.
Crazy Corner, thank you. That's, that's a different animal. We've, as far as I know, that one's still in good shape. We didn't, it wasn't too long ago, we did that street. But Broadway, Mike, do you have any updates from our good friends at ODOT? We've, we've, I can tell you that we've talked to them about it. They're aware of the issue and-
Yes. You're shaking your head. Well, I understand that it's a contentious subject. There's a lot of trucks, you know, heavy equipment comes through on Broadway and those bricks just, it looks like it's just a constant job of repairing those.
Did you say bricks?
Bricks. And I noticed that the section or the, the intersection, or whatever you want to call it, that's made to look like brick from concrete is, is holding up well. I don't know, have no idea what it costs to pull a brick up and put it back in place.
The least expensive part of the Larry was, was that. The utilities underneath the street was the most expensive.
So, that's probably something that's not going to happen then.
No, sir, you, you're, you guys make the decisions. If you tell us that we'd like to, to take the bricks out on Broadway, we're going to go try to find a solution for it. And let me just say, you weren't at the work session this, at noon. But that was talked in depth by others at that. So, I know there are a few others on the council that, that are thinking along the lines of, that you are. You know, I, I, all I can say is, there are some historic people that, that love the history of those bricks and-
Oh, I love the way they look and I think-
They're going to, they're going to buck this, the, the idea of replacing all the bricks. Now, whether or not they would agree to just Broadway, to me, that's a little bit different deal, because that, you're right. Those trucks wreak havoc. And my crews, they pay the price. I mean, they're the ones that are out there trying to, to dig those up and replace the sand.
Well, I'd like to see just Broadway and Broadway only. I, I like the bricks, I like the way they look, I'm nostalgic enough to appreciate it for the rest of Main Street and other places. But they're just, it's like that old pickup I used to have. It wouldn't haul what I needed to haul these days. So, I'd like to see Broadway, something done with that, and we can take those bricks and do something else nostalgic with them. They might fit into the sidewalk scheme somehow, to help, help us folks who like the, the looks of it. But, I don't know.
What, what would we have to do to make that road through there if we were to take those out? I mean, it'd have to take some extra thick concrete or something.
Yeah, we would have to meet the-
You couldn't let the truck still go through there, just on asphalt.
Yeah, you're, you would have to meet the federal specifications. Now, there is asphalt that would do that, but the base is going to be significant. I, I would, because I know how those trucks, Jake, rake through there, I would recommend that we go back with the stamped concrete for a, a very long distance back, because they're going to roll that asphalt up, even, even the heavy-duty stuff, they'll roll it up as they stop, as they try to stop.
Is there any reason why we can't make, stop a lot of that with, like, the truck route? You know, that they can stay, you know, go around town and stay on the-
Well, there's the passage of bypass I've heard about.
Boy, did you ride right into that. You took the bait.
Well, I don't know where it's going to be.
Can't we just make them go up Harvey Road and down Nile?
Well, yeah.
Probably during construction we could.
It is a state highway.
It's a federal highway, too.
That's right.
Yeah.
Good point.
So, could we get federal highways funds to help pay for that? Or?
We've had them in the past. I'm not aware that there are any available now. I'm sorry, Dee Dee, I interrupted.
They were ready to do it at one point.
Yeah. Yeah, they were ready to do it.
Yes.
Yes, it was funny, it was ready.
Pro brick people stopped it.
Right.
Well, maybe some of them have died off. I don't know, we could take- Take a census.
Well, if it pleases the council, we will bring you back some cost estimates. We will pursue some discussion with ODOT in, you know, how can we fund this? Any federal highway money that might be available? I, I, more than likely, even if there is some money available, they're going to request that we do some level of match money. So, I'm going to think back about 13 years. If I recall right, that project was about a 1.1 million dollar project. And that was 13 years ago, so I'm going to say you're, you're, well, I don't know about that. But I, you're probably in the ne, good neighborhood of two or better. That's just a thumbnail guess. So, $2 million project to, to do that. You know, I, I don't know. I don't know if there's any federal money, but if we could get a, a dollar-for-dollar match on that, we'd be coming to you for a million dollars. That's, if you guys want to turn us loose on that, we'll certainly be glad to go investigate.
Well, I'd like for it to come after the sewer and the pool.
Trump's wanting to spend a trillion dollars on infrastructure.
Trump's going to build a wall, too, but, you know.
Well, we'd love to be a part of their-
Trillion dollars.
Trillion dollars.
Can I say something about that? Can I say something about that?
Sure.
That was in 1998, and a lot of that was not just the pro-brick people. A lot of the, the people that were against that was, at that time, let's say between the bus station and the highway. There were a lot of small businesses through there at that time, and a big concern, because I was in that meeting, a big concern at that time was, these small businesses are going to go out of business when the construction of the highway was going on. And they came to the meeting and they were fighting it because they were going to close. Of course, at this time, there aren't any businesses down there because the roads are falling in those buildings and, you know, especially on the outside of the street. And so, that was what a lot of that problem was, and that's why we didn't take the funding and have that highway changed and fixed through there, was because those people didn't want to lose their livelihood at that time.
That was a major part of it. Historical say, also got involved, as well as a producer. And they convinced all the people that we should keep the bricks at that time.
I missed that.
You're going to get some phone calls tomorrow, Steve.
I didn't do it. I didn't do it. But I'll take the blame.
Larry brought it up. Yeah, I brought it up. I brought it up, and I'm in favor of finding out what we can about the costs and-
Okay.
And what the impact's going to be on the community.
You bet.
So forth. But, that's not my top priority. I'd, I'd rather see the sewer system fixed first, and I'd like to see a new swimming pool.
Okay.
I think the swimming pool is a very, very important part of this community, and it's probably the swimming pool for, what, the whole county, all of our neighboring towns and so forth. And every time I'm there, it's busy, every time I go by it. And so, I think it serves a very positive function for the community. And I think at times, it is a babysitting service for someone drops their kids off, go shopping, come back and pick them up, and that's fine with me. You, you had mentioned before, there was some cases where children were left for all day and nothing- and nothing, no provisions made for their lunch and so forth. I, I don't, I mean, I think that's sad to see that someone finds it necessary to do that. And it may indicate that there might be something that, else that we can do to help with those individuals who don't have babysitting service or. I don't know, I don't know how many people left their children there, small children there all day long with no provisions for food and so forth. But if that's the case, then that indicates that there's some sort of problem elsewhere that we may need to address somehow. I don't think that's the fault of the swimming pool. I think that the swimming pool's a great asset for us. I'd like to see a new one and a nice one.
Larry, I agree with you on the new swimming pool. It doesn't make sense for us to spend $100,000 plus every year to repair something that we're going to have to do again next year. When we can take those dollars and buy a new swimming pool. So I think we need to get the figures together as to how much it would cost and what the financing would be and how long it would be. And if it falls in that category, we should be buying a new swimming pool, not an old one.
Yes, sir, I'll get on it.
Other questions or comments?
Just offhand, we talked about the stop signs. You mentioned the 15,000 is about what that would cost. What, what do we spend replacing stop signs that are used for gang signs? What kind of effort or money does that cost us? I mean, I drive around a lot and I see a few and I call them in and they get changed out really quickly. And I've even scraped the paint off of some of them, cleaned them up myself. You talked, you mentioned that the rusted poles are a blemish to the community. And I think the gang signs are even more so. And I understand that gangs exist, they're going to exist probably. There's no, no way to eliminate them. But I don't think that we should, I think there should be some way that we can keep them using our property as an advertisement for them. Just me.
Well, in terms of how much we spend annually, I'll defer to Mike. Do you, it, it's not a tremendous amount.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from council or from the public?
Any other questions?
Yes.
In that, and I don't know how it works, is like maintenance of, I know the pool maintenance is, but like of the splash pad, is that part of that too?
That's how the public works. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing then and move on to approvals and acceptances. Resolutions, number one. Consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2017-06, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 consolidated budget for the city of Seminole and its associated authorities and funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin? Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us then to ordinances, bids. Number two, consideration and possible action to approve authorizing the city manager to offer for sale the surplus boat at Sportsman's Lake and to accept any offer deemed in the best interests of the city.
Sell it, Steve.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that, actually, that was a donated boat to begin with. So they've got a new, new boat, so.
I take it that's a motion.
Oh, I would move to, yes, I'll do that too.
Is there a second? Oh, roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, consideration and possible action to approve declaring the decommissioned 2006 senior citizen 18 passenger bus as surplus and allowing city staff to solicit bids.
Is that the bus the doctors bought?
I, I think that's, it may have been, the, the very first one.
No, this is the one we got from Department of Human Services in 2006.
Okay.
Is it 5310 funds?
Yes. You know that too well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, item number four, consideration and possible action to approve the renewal participation agreement with OMAG for the 2017-18 workers compensation plan at a net annual premium of $181,170, a slight decrease from the previous year's premium amount of $19177.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, consideration and possible action to approve the inter-local government agreement for participation in the Oklahoma Public Employees Health and Welfare, OPEH and W Plan, a governmental self-funded pool of reserves to provide health and medical benefits to participating agencies, eligible employees, and their dependents.
I don't understand all I know about that.
Well, do you want me to summarize?
Please.
Okay. This, this comes back to the, the health insurance. We had been going through a, a carrier, it's all Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we're changing over to a, a more municipal. There, there are several municipalities and counties that are, have, have joined together and are now offering their own plans. So we would become a part of a, a 5,000 member group rather than them looking at us as, you know, 77 employees with spouses that have several cancer and, and heart issues. That's, that's typically what causes our rates to go way high. So we're going to duck under the umbrella of a much larger system of 5,000. We're going to leave the Gallagher Group and, and go to this, we've got to come up with a better name. They need, they need a better acronym than OPEH and W.
You did say it's still Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but it's just part of a group.
It's a, it's a much better deal for the employees in, in terms of, of co-pay. Those, the deductible, you know, we're going from 750, going down to $750. The office visits are cheaper. The, the drug program, I, I think the drug program is probably the biggest selling point on this. The pharmaceuticals is, they're fantastic. They're making all the diabetic patients, all their, all their supplies are free. So, and, and their, their stuff is free. So it helps our diabetic folks that maybe skip because they can't afford that stuff.
Yeah, that's a money saver there.
Oh, it's a big deal. It is a, I'm really pleased with this program. I think it's going to be fantastic for our people.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us into reports, the city manager.
Yes, I want to, I want to, I know most of you have noticed her. When she walks in a room, all the heads turn. Outside of my immediate family members, this may be the most beautiful woman in Seminole that has to deal with the onerous guy in Seminole, and that is Sue Gray. Sue, thank you for coming tonight. And that guy next to you, I, I think we ought to have an executive session about this guy and, and maybe whip on him a little bit. Terry Gray, hey buddy, we, we really appreciate everything you do for us. And we're going to talk about it a little bit here in executive session. Let me run through some things real quick. Seminole Main Street plans on being, bringing back the Gesser Days next June, I believe, in 2018. The farmer's market project is, is being really, really considered. I think our group at the Urban Renewal Authority has agreed to pay substantial money to get the farmer's market off the ground. Right now, Brad and, and our city staff are trying to work with Union Pacific and, and the Pogues to maybe secure that old arrow pump building and make that the farmer's market and, and kind of re-invent that building. I think what we've seen out of some of the architects' drawings, it would look really, really neat for a farmer's market down there by Don Ciro's. Yeah, sidewalks. Housing project, i- if you're not aware, I will make you aware that we've got a, a big developer that has done several projects and, all across the state, but in Dell City and Hera and others. You know, and thinking Hera, they ended up with 300 homes and a mall, a, a big strip mall. He has purchased a couple of pieces of property in Seminole, one being on Harvey Road, the other being 300 acres on the other side of the Haney Center. That deal is, is really, once we get moving, it's going to happen pretty fast. Tractor Supply is underway, under construction. I want to remind everyone that the Fourth of July is on the Third.
I got that.
I thought I left you there, but no, okay.
I got, I got that earlier.
You got that, all right. All right. The skate park, if you haven't been up by the skateboard park on the way to the golf course, I know, I think Bill Wantland may be going up there to do a little skating Friday. The skate park, skate park will be ready to go. So all the new renovations that we're making to that, there's a lot of new events. What are they, event? That's not right. What is it, Mr. Poplin? What, the new features, thank you.
The features.
Features, new features are there on the skate park.
Obstacles.
Obstacles.
I think they're like cat pipes and things.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. Yeah.
Bone breakers.
That was sponsored by, no. The, that's all I have for this evening.
City attorney.
Tall weeds and grass. I think I have signed more citations that have come through than in the last two weeks than I have probably in the last two years or more. So the calls are coming in, everybody's wanting a deal. And I just tell them, you know, mow your gl, mow your grass, pick up your trash, and you won't get a ticket because they're not really, there's no warnings going out anymore. So please, mow your grass. It's going to save you $250 on a ticket. And it's going to be a lot cheaper on you to mow your grass. And I just hope that that message gets out because it's, it's, it's really getting, I mean, the council's directed that we take a more serious approach to that, and it's happening. So if you get a complaint because of tall weeds and grass, well, that's probably because they're being fined. And so I'll give you that heads up. That's all I have.
Well, that brings us to inquiries of council members, Ward one. I had only one thing to continue to say, and that is how much I appreciate the work of our staff, of our city employees, of management, of everything that goes on. We're blessed to have that level of support from the officials and the employees of the city and also the people of this community who are supporting all those things that we do have going on. Again, thank you.
Larry Church?
Well, I love it here. I think it's one of those great places. And I appreciate all the help that the citizens are putting forward for us. It seems like the folks are becoming more and more active just the short while that I've been on the council. And do well and be safe.
Ward two, Stephanie Lambert?
Well, I'll keep my soapbox short this time, but just remind everybody to keep shopping Seminole, especially if you're up here. Because, you know, we can't complain unless we're, you know, we can't complain about our money if we're buying things in other places. And so thank you, Brent, for, for buying your stuff in Seminole that does. One other thing I want to say is just that we don't know, to the people that are here, we don't know that you have a problem unless you tell us about it because sometimes we don't see it, even if it's in our own ward. We don't, sometimes there are streets, I, I would say sometimes there are streets in our wards that we don't drive, but sometimes we make it a point to drive them all. My husband gets to come with me on those trips, so that's all right. But just to see what's going on in our wards. But, but we want to thank you guys and thank you guys at the city because every time I call, you guys are always really nice to answer all my questions because I am a newbie and I don't really know everything that's going on. Jay's been really good with, you know, helping answer all the little questions that I have on the budget or on the financials that he sends out. But, you know, thank you guys again.
Thank you, John Kramer. Ward three, Tim Poplin?
Yes, I, I'll keep it short, but I, I want to thank Jay and, and Mr. Saxon. It takes a lot of work on this budget to crunch the numbers. But we discuss in 30, 40 minutes, those guys have spent days and days on. So, I mean, it just fascinates me to what they can do and make it all work for what we have to work with. So thank you guys for what you do. And thanks, the citizens, for coming up. It's like Mrs. Lambert said, we don't know unless you let us know about it. So thank you guys for coming. And I appreciate everything that our city does. And, you know, people really don't realize that the hours that are put in, you know, you drive up and down the streets and see them working on the sewer lines and the water lines. And, and, and Mr. Grant is ahead of all that. And it, it, it's just mind-boggling that he has to keep up with all of this, but the job that he does to do it. So I just want to say thanks for, for all our workers. I mean, we're really fortunate to have the people that we have. Thanks.
Thank you, then. Ward four, Chris Hansen?
Sound like a broken record, but here goes. The budget, you know, I've been here 10 or 12 years now, and since then, it has really changed. It is much easier, you know, we, you know, we had to fight through a few years in the beginning, you know, that were tough, then we had this growth. And then, but even with the last two years, last year being rough because we had to take such a hit as far as reduced income, then this year, dealing with the insurance. But you guys always find a way to make this work and to still keep us moving forward. And you guys continue to provide us with options, the best options that we can find and the best bang for our buck. So thank you guys for doing all that footwork.
Thank you. DeeDee Patterson?
Tonight, we took, or put two people on committees, Sherry and Deanna. And I'd like to thank them for stepping forward and putting up three more years of their life to help us. The volunteers that we have on these committees, we could not function without them. And their time is very much appreciated. Also, Larry, thank you for mentioning bypass. I saw, witnessed eight 18-wheelers, one right behind the other, trailing down Milk Phillips just this week. We need a bypass, so talk to your state official.
Okay, that brings us then to a call for executive session. Consideration and possible action entered in the executive session under Oklahoma Statute 25, Article 307B1, discussing employment hiring, employment promotion, demotion, discipline, and resignation of any individual, sour, public officer or employee in regards to Code Officer Terry Gray. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Sure. Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered, we'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll be in the executive session.
Thank you for the recess.